Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Looks like I've seen the rain, which is working out pretty good. We're trying to keep social distancing. If you've got your mask, if you get close to somebody, please slide it on. We're here tonight for a public hearing from 5:30 to 6 o'clock on the inspection program. I appreciate you participating on the previous ones that we've already held. Appreciate you being here tonight. Hopefully, you will air out your questions that you have. Hopefully, we can answer those questions and so forth. And we're going to call this meeting to order here at the Justice Center. And we're going to be talking about the inspection program. Potential inspection program for Franklin County. So we'll open up, invite anybody to come up. Make sure you sign in the register back here. Invite anybody to come up that has something. Let's come up to the podium here where we can sort of keep it as one man talking at a time or one lady talking at a time. And tell your name so we can put it on the minutes. And then tell us what's on your mind, what question you have, and so forth, and we'll go from there. So saying that, why don't we get started? The next 30 minutes, let's talk about the inspection program for Franklin County. Who wants to come up to the podium and tell us what's on your mind and what questions you might have? Come on up, sir.
Kevin and Rick Whitworth of Long Island. I'm just here as a citizen. So I've got a question. Would you lay out how this is going to affect the cities? Because you know it's not just counties. We've got cities involved too. I don't know how that's going to affect them. Are they going to be allowed to participate if they want to? Or are they just take care of their own business and this is just a county issue? Can you elaborate a little bit on how that's supposed to, how that's going to affect the cities and law?
That's a good, real good question there, cities and so forth. And we'd be glad to answer that. We're dealing with the counties, but Scott, elaborate a little bit on that.
Right, so this, this program as it's proposed right now is just for the unincorporated part of Franklin County. So Livonia, Royston, Carzle, Cannon, Franklin Springs would have to adopt their own version of it. We do have, we have spoken with Bureau Veritas, and they, they do have the capability to handle the other municipalities that they want to join in on the program, but that would be on the city council of those, those select cities to adopt it.
And elaborate? Is that, is that something that, that they would be, if they decided to do that, would they come under Bureau umbrella and take the meat and inspect it by your inspectors? Or are they?
That'd be up to them. That'd be up to how they wanted to do it. There'd have to be some sort of a coordination between the counties and the cities if, if we decided to. You know, I don't think it'd be a bad idea if it were to all be uniform across the county. I think that would probably be a good idea. But if the cities would have to get together with us as a county, we'd have to figure out how exactly it would work out. If they wanted our inspectors to inspect, then, then we would have the capability to do that as far as the management of, you know, permits and who handles that side of it, the administrative side of it. That would be something we'd have to work out.
That's a very good question. So we're independent, actually, as you heard, and the council members of each city would have a pocket to choose what direction they want to go. All right, who's next? Come on up and tell us what's on your mind. Yes, sir.
Dave Davis, AD, Area Road Commerce, Georgia. And how many people here are under 18 years of age? Raise your hand. Raise your hand. I'm glad you are here because you're going to see another one of your personal liberties and freedoms taken away from them. It just keeps encroaching on them. I'm totally against this. I see no need for it. I grew up in a county that had it. It was totally useless and a burden on taxpayers and a waste, a waste of progressive type.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Yes, thank you. I want to elaborate a little bit on him. I'm Clay Thompson. I live on Rhodes Road. And I was just looking around. The state of Georgia does have mandatory codes. And some of them are called permissive codes, which you can use or not use at your own will, adopt, et cetera. The mandatory codes is one thing. It's mostly international residential codes in one or two family dwellings. And that's what we kind of think about most new home construction, more or less. The one that is somewhat particular, stickles, is the International Property Maintenance Code. We don't have nobody to enforce that. No, that means somebody's riding around and looking at, oh, that roof's bad. Oh, that yard needs cleaning up. It's, what it is, is a government subsidized homeowners association, which I understand, thank you, I told you to sit down, Civics Classroom. Thank you for, I hope he's not a follower, but, and, and I, I don't know about most people, that it's going to turn others on others, like, oh, that man over here made me mad. I'm going to call a property inspector on him because he's got a pile of wood on the car not running. Instead of a unifying effect, that will definitely. And let me give you some background. So I've got an international code council residential license. I have a South Carolina license for inspections, and I've done it in Georgia. I mean, I wasn't in many of the organizations. I kind of let it drop. That's going to turn individuals on individuals. Just think, the first time the inspector comes, what is the chicken house? Not the chicken house. Oh, that building's dilapidated. You got to tear it down because it's going to fall at any moment. Oh, that car's this, that car's that. So that is going to really be problematic. It is. It's going to turn people. I can see Franklin County wanting to address blight and standards, bring in industry. There is anecdotal evidence that that can occur, and it's a fine line. And I ask that part of it to be rejected. The home, new home construction, that is helping the citizen. That money can be incurred in the mortgage. And as I was looking through some other data, that, the per capita income is $21,000 in Franklin County, according to the 2018 census. Some of these are mobile homes and such. The eight people over 65 is 16.4%. The disabled is around 13, and veterans is 6. And if you pass these laws, I ask that the first responders, veterans, at this time, we need them, that fight overseas, come home and do it, tractors and people with disabilities be exempt somehow, not that inspection can't take place, but we bring it home. And like my grandson, he has autism. There's a chance that he will never make over 13 grand. But boy, we homeschooling and pushing that rock up the hill. But for these people, it can't, that $100 for an extra air conditioner or an extra 50 for them, that's a lot of money. It is. And I ask that if y'all go forward with this, to consider those people. They're the least among us, veterans, the elderly, the disabled. And as a courtesy to our responders and veterans that's been overseas, you know, you can have the inspections, but somehow or another can be working in to what these people will not be burdened with that extra. Because veterans, a lot of them's not got hardly no money. Social Security, what, 19%? Social Security, I mean, 16%. That's the 2018 census. So I ask that y'all consider it after when y'all do that. And the property maintenance, you know, really, the, all the codes you need is the new building code. The current mandatory codes, that's by the GCA, the Georgia Community Affairs, which the state endorses. And, you know, swimming pool codes and stuff like that, I guess, you know, that needs to be looked at. Proper fencing. But what's the property maintenance?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, those comment. Anyone else want to come up and tell us anything you'd like to say about the building code or building inspection program that we're considering adopting in Franklin County? Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Charlie Houston. I'm a resident of Park County, but I'm also a member and past president of the Local Home Builders Association, as well as the Georgia Home Builders Association. I've been in this area roughly 27 years now, operating out of Park County, Franklin County, Elbert and Stevens. To be quite honest, I've built around Atlanta, I've built around Birmingham, Alabama, I've built around Dallas, Texas. This is the only place I've ever been that didn't have inspections program. That does not mean that there's not a code here. There is a building code, just like this gentleman just does. So eloquently said, there is a mandatory code in the state of Georgia. Whether or not it's inspected or enforced by a different county is up to you guys in this particular case. So I'm here to speak in support of it. The Local Home Builders Association is in support of a building inspection program, or not on the Franklin County, but the other counties around. I know that Stevens County and Elbert County have instituted a countywide inspections program. So that's all I'm here to do. I have not read your, your ordinance, but I would assume that it would be pretty much the same, the same as most other places in the county. So therefore, I'll speak in support.
Could I ask you a question, Mr. Reese?
Sir.
With your experience in building for such a long time and building in different areas in the state, you probably have pretty good knowledge as to the effectiveness of, does it translate to a better built home? Does it, does it remove some of the elements that, part of the reason we're worried about this is people coming in from different areas, they know that Franklin County doesn't have any type of enforcement whatsoever. Do you feel like that, I mean, in your opinion, is effective?
Absolutely. I mean, we all know that a home is probably going to be the single most expensive investment you ever make, falling closer by the car, and again, maybe a marriage or divorce or whatever. But all that being said, a home is a very expensive proposition. And almost all people, when they go to buy a house, they buy as much house as they can afford. And if they move into the house and there are issues with that house because of substandard construction, then they have to fix it, or they risk having a house fire because the electrical's not done running, or the heat and air keeps going in and out, or the plumbing doesn't work, all these, all these sort of issues. And that's what a building inspection program guards them against. Now, I know I can tell you that there are builders who get chased out of counties. And we probably all know that. And they'll look for counties that don't have an inspections program so that they can just come in and be fly-by-night, get some bucks money and go on down the road. That's, that's a problem. I also know of two houses in Park County right now that the builder has to be fired and there are legal action going on because of substandard construction. And two builders that took it up, they're very highly regarded builders, friends of mine, and they're having a heck of a time. In some cases, they're having to tear it out. Most of it's been done already. So that's, that's the kind of thing that a building inspection program will do for you to protect your citizens.
One more question. Without that, that added element of multiple builders, contractors coming in from outside, does that, have you seen that be a benefit for the local builders that are doing things to quality?
Sure.
Ultimately?
Not having them come in.
Not having them come in?
Well, one of the amazing statements that I'm getting made to me that we're held up, we'll be held up from inspection. They'll tell us, hey, I'll be here tomorrow morning and so forth, but I think we've addressed that issue about we'll be prompted. Have you experienced frustration because you couldn't get the inspector there at time? Probably so with time, but what's your think?
I have. In most cases, I would say about 90%, if you call for an inspection, it either happens that day or the following day. There are cases, and City of Atlanta is a prime example, that you might wait for a week or maybe even two weeks. Quite frankly, this ain't City of Atlanta. I have dealt with Veritas in, in other counties. They're prompt, they do a good job. They don't, they don't haul out things that don't need to be hauled down. For instance, maybe a prudent light switch or something like that. That's not a building inspector's job.
Right.
Being installed correct, what it is, and that's the kind of thing they'd look for. And I always look at building inspectors as being the second set of eyes in case I miss something, which we're all feeling, we're going to miss something here and there. And if a building inspector comes in and says, that's not wired correctly, and then we talk about it, and fix it, and just make it run. So that's my experience since 1982.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, who's next? Come on up, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi there. What's your name?
Alexis. Alexis?
Alexis.
Ledford. Okay. To address the part where the last gentleman was talking about home buyers and having issues with actual construction. Currently, right now, majority of the home buyers are getting FHA loans. Yeah, because they don't have 10% to put down on their property to purchase. So they're getting these government loans through FHA, VA, or a special loan program. All the mortgage companies right now are currently either requesting the certificate of occupancy, which what this building inspection process would give them, or since Franklin County doesn't have building inspectors, they require a home warranty. So the home warranty company, the builder has to be approved in order to be bonded. The warranty is purchased by the builder for the new homeowner, and for 10 years. So the house is already covered for 10 years. The first year, the builder's responsible to go back and fix whatever issues that the house has. Then for the other remaining nine years, if there's an issue, they call up RWC, pay a $75 fee for someone to come out, then figure out what's going on fixing. So right now, out of new construction for low income with $21,000 a year, you'll have people coming in and putting a huge down payment on their house. They're getting a government loan. They're getting a warranty. So I don't see why we need all this extra paperwork and things when the home's already under warranty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Excuse me, ma'am, is?
Wait a minute, sir.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This question for her.
You'll answer his question?
Sure.
Or his? Don't know if VA, FHA, or RDA all have different specifications for each home this building? Isn't that correct? That they all, I mean, the RDA, rural development?
Rural housing, yes. But the, the buyer has to be approved not only themselves financially, but the house itself has to be approved for that loan, meaning this warranty, the builder was bonded and supported by the warranty company.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Who's next?
I'd like to add something to what she said.
Come on up, let's do.
What she said is totally correct. And let's not forget also that 98% of homes are bought with a mortgage, simply because that's the cheapest money you can borrow in life, is a home loan or whatever. And they also, all the mortgage companies require a home inspection, and that's no burden on the taxpayer whatsoever. That's all on separate parties. That's no burden on the taxpayers whatsoever.
Thank you, sir.
Just double taxation if you do this.
Anybody else want to come up with a statement? Come on up.
My name's Randy Porter, and I live at 106, 1497, 106. I grew up in the building business, stayed to build houses my whole life. I grew up in Atlantic County. I've been on property here since 1999. I completed remodel of the house I live in. I've seen a lot of different buildings. I guess my question is, if we're going to have an inspection department here in Franklin County, are we going to do that in-house? And we're going to train somebody and have them work for Franklin County that's going to be an inspector? Or are we going to do this as an outside contractor? Or are we going to bring somebody in from other county that don't know what we're doing in our camp? It does a ton of things that are going on in our camp. I mean, I guess my question is, are we going to do this inspection out of the?
Yes, sir. We addressed that. I'm going to let Scott update you on that statement right there. You asked us about, we're going to employ somebody?
Right.
Go ahead.
Right, so start off, initially, we're going to use a company, we're looking to use a company called Bureau Veritas. They're a, that's all they do is build inspections. They're based out of Jefferson, Georgia, but they've got Bates County, Jackson County. They've got a bunch of cities and municipalities in this area. So starting off to get this thing rolling, we are looking at outsourcing it to a third party. However, the control measures will be still maintained at the county level. So if they're going to issue a stop work order, if they're going to, if they fail you on inspection, if you say you have a, say you want to appeal it, all that's still done through the county. No fines, no fees, none of that stuff will be assessed through that company. It'll be, it'll all be done through Franklin County.
Okay, so if I, if I do something to my house and it comes out and gives me a fee, I'm in, I was in the lead course, and they always put your red flag on permit and say, this needs to be addressed. Then you had to pay a $25 rebate for that, or then, then you had to get the inspector on that app. Then you have more, you know, and you're sitting here with your money tied up for a week because of something failed, you know? And then you had the inspectors that would come out and look at it and say, okay, you know, you knew them because you worked with them every day, okay?
Right.
And they say, okay, then this right here, you missed this. This needs to be fixed. I'm going to go ahead and sign it off. You go ahead, you know? But that was because they was from the county that we was in. And when you start getting a contractor out there, or you start getting somebody outside, they're going to come up there and they're going to try to fill their way in because this is their job. So they're going to try to find something wrong and say, okay, this is wrong, which doesn't really need to be fixed. So I think that happens, happens, happens.
Right.
I think we need, we're going to have an inspection department. It needs to be done within the county, in Franklin County, instead of having some outside contractor who's been in a bunch of money. How many houses are we talking about getting built in Franklin County? I'm asking the question. But does anybody have?
As of, as of about two weeks ago, I think so far, we, building permits total is around 80 so far this year. I think, I, I looked at the numbers for new residential construction and any addition that was over 500 square foot, which I think in degrees is a pretty large addition.
Right.
I think we're at 40 so far this year for that.
Okay, so you're not talking like we have a year, you know? I mean, I don't know what the outside contractors going to charge you, but you see what I'm saying. I think it needs to be something that's done within the county if we're going to have to do this. But it's like the lady said, I mean, all your loans, if I go buy a house and I get a loan, they're going to say, I have to have a home inspection done on that house to see if it's up to code before they go loan you the money. And that's the way it is. So, I mean, you already have the Georgia code that we're supposed to go by. I know if we build something up here, we always build it by the code because of the Georgia code, so, you know? I don't know that we're ready for this now. I don't think we have enough building going on in this county to have these outside contractors and spend this money in our tax dollars. Because I'm going, hey, I've been here since, I lost that property in 99, and I've been living here full-time for 11 years. And I live in a house that was built in 1964 that I remodeled inside. The first thing to ask, when I look at it, they say, well, we need to tax this. This is a new house. And I remodeled my house that was built in 64, because I had a new roof on it. I paid the foot lenders. Then they want to charge me taxes for a new house, okay? I've been there 11 years. My taxes go up at least every two years since I've been there for 11 years. So I pay today, and I pay. I'm tired of paying so much taxes for what I'm getting. You know? And I mean, you know, this is, I mean, all the taxes, maybe that's what we're talking about.
Well, I'll, I'll address that. I, I think it's important to note that it's not going to be any added tax, there's not going to be anything added to the county budget. So it's going to be budget neutral. So the permitting fees will 100% cover the inspection cost.
It's going to come out of the permit?
Out of, when you get, when you buy the permit upfront, there's an upfront fee for the permit, and that covers the inspection that, so if you're doing, if, if you're pulling a permit and building a house, your, your permitting fees cover that inspection. The county as a whole is not picking up any more money. If they, if they do zero, if they do zero inspections this next year, we pay them $0. So there's, there's nothing added, it's budget neutral, so there's nothing added to the budget.
But is some where it's going to come in? Come in like that? Something?
No.
No?
No, no, it won't, it won't. Because it, it's a, it's a profit sharing contract, so we, we keep a certain percentage of it to cover our administrative costs, and then they get the, the rest of the percentage to cover their labor, of the actual doing the inspection work.
Okay, well, now, how are we going to do the inspection? Are we going to go out and I'm going to put my foundation in? Or am I going to have an inspection when I do my footers, and one when I do my foundation? One when I get everything roughed in, and we're going to come out and say, do one when we dig the footers, and one when we get the frame, we get the lead for it, plumbing, heating? How many houses are we going to inspect this house?
Well, it depends, it depends on how the house is built, but generally, it'll be a, you'll have a footer inspection. Once you get your footer done, there'll be a rough in for your, for your framing, a rough in electric, rough in plumbing, all your MVPs, mechanical, electric, plumbing.
Is one guy going to come out and do all of that?
Yeah, so the way, the way it's set up is that Bureau Veritas will assign one individual to Franklin County. So the, the idea and the goal is that we're going to have one guy that we're dealing with. However, they've got other inspectors. Say that guy's out sick or goes on vacation or whatever, we've got the resources to back him in, so there, there isn't a delay. And the way the contract's also set is if you call by 2:00 PM, say you're ready for your footer inspection tomorrow. You call our office by 2:00 PM, they'll be out there tomorrow to inspect it. And if, and if we find that they're not able to meet that timeline the next day, then they're, we can, we can cancel the contract at any time, without any more than 30-day written notice.
All right. I got one other question. Here's the other thing that always got me though now, and I, like I said, I've been one at county 40-something years. When we build a house, the inspectors come out and inspect everything, and you've got everything just like he wants, and you get the house done. Well, so what? Nobody's responsible for doing it right once you're done. You know what I'm saying? The county's not responsible, but they, they're not going to be responsible if you do something wrong. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
If something in the house is done wrong, and you still need, either the VA loan or whoever comes out there, the loan with home inspection cases, and you go to the front, but nobody's responsible actually after that inspector inspects.
Right, currently, nobody's responsible for it either. I mean, we don't, there's no, it's a way to mitigate stuff on work.
Yeah, so I feel like with the Georgia code that we have, and the more houses we have built in this county, I, I just don't find it ready for me. And that's just my point.
Appreciate that. Okay. Yes, sir. Come on up. Give me your name, please.
My name is Marvin Smith. I'm a builder. I live in Horaceville.
Yes, sir, Congress.
938 Uptown Road. My only point here is I'd like to see the inspection be kept in county. I know you're going to pass the inspection, so I mean, I just want us to argue that. But the City of Arvo has their in-house inspectors. The county, Park County has their code enforcement person. Elbert County has their in-house inspector. The City of Elberton has their in-house inspector. Stevens County has their in-house inspector. So why are we having to farm it out to get our inspector?
Well, that's a good question. And we've addressed it a few times about why we might be global contracted in-house inspections. Scott, elaborate a little bit on why we choosing that route?
Yeah, I mean, there's, and there's a couple of reasons why, and there's, you know, first off, it's a brand-new Franklin County, so it'll be, it'll be a learning, learning curve for everybody involved. These guys from Bureau Veritas, they do it every day, and they know the process, they know what works, they know what doesn't work. They, not only they inspectors, but they also kind of work as consultants along the way to make sure that we're, that our, our program is, is operating as it should. You know, secondly, using a, using a contracted service is a good way to eliminate a few things. It's going to eliminate any kind of, you know, favoritism, any kind of, hey, you know, I know so-and-so, or, you know, any, any kind of corruption, so to speak. And if, if, say, we get word that, hey, these guys are just passing along yourself because y'all are buddy-buddies, then we, we cancel that contract, they're done. The, the idea and the objective is for it to be a fair, plain, playground, fair across the board. It's a way for us to, to ensure that what's being done is being done promptly. I mean, we, we have a lot of control over these guys that, that if they're not performing like they should, then we get rid of them and bring somebody else in. Uh, and their, their, their expertise is really what, what's gonna set them apart. They have an entire team, they have fourteen or fifteen inspectors, they've got certified building officials, they've got individuals that can do plant reviews, they can do commercial buildings. We don't have that capability, um, so, you know, if we hired it in-house, we, we would be adding money to the taxpayers, we'd be adding, adding dollars to the budget. They're already set up, they're already ready to go, and, and if we, if we find out that they're not the fit for us, then we're gonna do it for them.
So, all the points you made, have you confirmed with the local counties like Stevens County, Hart County, Elbert County, to find out how they dealt with these issues?
I, I, I have spoken with the counties that have used a third-party inspection, uh...
No, I'm talking about the people that were using their in-house, I prefer people.
I've not, no, no, but, well, well, 'cause I, 'cause if we're gonna do an in-house, then I, I would be concerned with how the in-house work.
Well, you just, you just pointed, you cited several reasons why you were going outside.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just curious if you could inquire about those that were used in-house?
Well, yeah.
Let me, let me, let me speak on behalf of in-house. What really scares me in the face completely, when we take on new employees, say, we take on a lot of additional things like insurance, retirement, and several things to have that employee working for Franklin County. And so, if you look at the situation, say if we were going to pay an inspector fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year out of the taxpayer's money in relationship to form it out to a contractor, well, we pay zero, zero. There's a big difference there in my sight, and I say zero because the county gets a percentage of the contractor's work that they do. Now, if we was in a position where we had numerous of houses going up, and the inspector, if I understand it correctly, has to be trained and certified that he's an electrician inspector, he's a plumbing inspector, he's a building inspector, he knows the footings and so forth, it would cost the county a tremendous amount of money, funds, the way I see it, to train that inspector and teach you a sentence or school and so forth. But as a startup from a county standpoint, the commissioners will have, the future commissioners will have control to shut down that contract anytime they want to and go the direction you talking about.
Well, do you have a county marshal now, or is he gone?
Not at the present time, do not. He passed away here while, and I replaced him.
Couldn't the county marshal fill that issue?
County mar, in the building inspector, you can't have the county marshal being a certified inspector unless you send it to a school, those type of things, so we don't have.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you, if you're gonna have the county marshal, then incorporate all of them into one.
I think that, that a road, that might be a good route, yeah. What's your?
Uh, we did, this is going back two and a half, three years ago. This wasn't anything that we just kind of pulled out of a hat and decided that it was something we needed to do. But, um, it started just kind of exploring and looking at other counties and seeing what they were doing, what they were doing well, what, what they weren't, what the costs were associated with it. And so, again, however many years ago it was, when we kind of started, we did look, and this is before Scott, so if Scott really couldn't speak to it, he didn't have that when he came on board, it was already past that process. Um, we did talk to Stevens County, um, I believe Madison County might have their own in-house as well. And we did, right off the bat, we knew that where we were jumping in on this, where we were kind of entering in this, this playing field or whatever, it was gonna be far more expensive to, to do it that way versus to do it on a per-project basis. Also, I mean, really, we kind of looked at it and kind of determined that it was gonna require some sort of a tax, uh, adjustment to pay for the, pay for the deal. Even with a marshal, s- some, some months we have a lot of houses, some months we have no houses, uh, very little. One of the, I asked Scott the other day how many inspections we had based on this criteria, which is over five hundred square foot in constructions and additions. In twenty-nineteen, we had seventy-eight permits that fit, so about six and a half per month. Some months you have more, some months you have less, so we could essentially be paying many of those months for someone that's kind of sitting on their hands, not doing anything. So, uh, and then, like, this year, I think there was twenty-one permits up to June first, and then last month, there was fourteen. The way that we kind of looked at it, kind of weighing, weighing it all, we, we wanted to not affect everyone who may or may not be buying or building a house. And then we also wanted to make it as affordable as possible with people that have that expertise right off the bat. So, I get completely what you're saying. I guess ideally, in my mind, the way that it would work out best is when we do get to that number where we have just so many that were inundated, we would probably be maybe in a better benefit by having someone that's a full-time paid staff person. I think, looking at that and then looking at other counties that used Bureau Veritas and some of these other services with not quite as much construction going on, it just made sense at that time.
So, how much of the money that's collected on permits goes to the county?
It's an eighty-twenty split. Eighty, eighty percent goes to Bureau Veritas, twenty percent goes to county.
And where's the mother company of this, this inspector?
They're based out of Jefferson, where they're, they're based out of there. I don't know where y'all's corporate, uh...
Corporate headquarters are in Florida. We've got several business units throughout North America. Our industry, uh, building inspections, flavoring, government relations is a very small portion of the local country, company with Bureau Veritas. But I manage the, uh, Georgia operation, and we've got our operations, it's about two business units there, two separate managers, that are separate business units in Florida, and we all work under the same, under the same guys, under the same principles.
Okay, a couple more questions, I'll quit. I'm required by state law to have a builder's license or, or sure that. And as a result, I have to have a certain amount of insurance. So, are the builder's licenses gonna be checked when the inspector comes on the job? We're gonna have to prove, we're gonna license the builder, how does that work?
It'll be in the permitting process, so, so when you go to pull the, the building permit, as part of the, as part of the checklist is, is the, uh, is the contractor's license, so that will be checked.
How will the remodeling industry be affected by the inspection?
Eh, if, if you're remodeling and you're staying inside the same footprint, it's not gonna be affected at all. There won't be inspections on it.
No inspection, no. So, I submit to you, there's more sub, substandard work in remodeling than in new construction.
I would, I would, I would agree with that, um, however, right now, we're looking at just what if the new construction being done in Franklin County, we're looking at that.
So, in other words, this program is, is evolving?
It won't, it won't evolve unless, you know, we have to go through the same process, change what we're, what we're, you know, presenting right now.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It could evolve if, if we get enough feedback that needs to evolve, I might, I, you know, but it, it would, it would go through the same public hearing, same, same process to make any changes to what is gonna be required to be inspected.
As a final comment, I would just like to state, I would like to see it done in-house, but that's, you guys have to decide on that.
Thank you, Marvin, appreciate that. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we're running about ten minutes over, but we want to make sure if there's any other questions, please come up, ask that question.
I would just like to make one last comment to this gentleman. In a perfect world, uh...
Wait a minute, Mr. Davis, come on up.
In a, in a perfect world...
You got, you got a comment or question?
That's a rebuttal to what he said a while ago. Uh, in a perfect world, you'd be getting rid of this contract if you found something wrong and all this kind of stuff, it, it don't happen like that. I was an electrical contractor in Atlanta for years and years, worked for the I B W, getting iron high-rise buildings, and like Mr. Porter said, fifty percent of the inspectors either had an attitude for some reason, I don't know, with the power company or what, or they were like the head Gwinnett County inspector, Jim Boone, which Mr. Porter here said he remembered, and he went for it. Yeah, he told me to just sign my own card, don't call him no more, just sign my own card. You're, you might not have that situation, but you're gonna have situations like that. If you're gonna spend your whole time canceling contracts, getting other contracts, uh, if you do it in-house, you'll have, I'm, I'm telling you, you gentlemen are gonna have a million calls, complaint calls, or whatever.
Yes, thank you.
I have a small question.
Come on up, ma'am.
I know the county's been working on this for a few years to get this going. Um, and this year alone, this is the third public hearing that you had. I don't know how you guys do your work sessions together discussing how this plan came about, but when you're doing it, it sounds like some things were addressed on one side, where he only looked for outside sources, didn't talk to the counties, he had inside sources. I'm just wondering, how did you guys get opinions? Did you contact our local real estate agents, our local brokers for mortgages? Did you get the opinions from them?
I'm happy to answer your question, yeah. Um, and it sounds like you know a little bit about the warranty process. Do you, are you in real estate, or are you...
I used to be a real estate broker for a while.
Okay, great. Um, I, I wanna speak to that part first, because you did bring that up earlier, and then I'll get to the second part that you mentioned. The, the warranty, uh, essentially, it's a, a construction warranty, and it does what you said, it provides protection for that property for ten years, and it allows homeowners to get a loan, which, you know, if they didn't have that, for counties like ours, like other counties that don't have this, they wouldn't be able to qualify for these government loans that you're talking about. The, the downside is, you're getting, um, essentially a warranty that's not, it might provide some protection for ten years, but it's not, you're essentially getting a warranty for a substandard product that hasn't, you're not actually getting something. No, no one's looked at that property, no one's determined if the foundation's right, if, you know, the walls are built correctly, if electrical's done right, the plumbing's done right. So, you're kind of crossing your fingers for ten years and nothing happens. And if something does happen, and you're the owner, the person that built that home, congratulations, that home gets fixed because you're still in there. People don't live in homes necessarily forever. I think the average is around seven to nine years that someone stays in a home. So, the odds are, yeah, you might buy that house, you might build that house, but eventually, you're probably gonna be passing that house on to someone else. And so, that becomes someone else's problem after that ten-year period is up. And, and so, it's nice because that, that exists so that people can get the, get, you know, build a house, which is very important, I'm not saying, at least they have that, right? Because it allows people to build their house.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, did you guys get in an F H A loan person that tells you all?
Yeah, I, okay, I'll speak to that. To finish my thought on that, though, um, what are you really getting after ten years, okay? It might give you peace of mind for that ten years, but after that ten years is up, if there are lingering problems, those might need to be addressed. I have talked to personally many lenders, not just one or two. I've talked to many Realtors, I'm on the Georgia State Lake Support of Realtors as a, a board member, okay? So, I've talked to everyone that's part of that one specifically. They're in favor of an inspection program. Many of the lenders that we're talking about, um, they like it because some builders can't even get that warranty. It does, there are certain elements that have to be met.
Correct.
Um, there are a lot of builders that build for, you know, people in this county that may, they might not have all the licenses, they might not, but they build a quality product. Uh, there might be other service people that do electrical or plumbing, they've done it their whole lives, they follow the standards, but maybe they don't have that whatever certificate. A lot of them are gonna be out of the game when it comes to that warranty process because they don't meet the guidelines.
Well, that's untrue, because since I've retired as a real estate person, I'm now assistant to a builder here locally, and he's not a licensed builder, but he's bonded by this warranty company. And you were right, saying there are steps...
Sure enough, yeah.
...that you have to go through for you to be approved and become a member to get these warranties. So, I just don't...
I get emails weekly from lenders that say that their deal fell through because whatever the builder that was gonna build this house didn't meet those qualifications.
Well, you're supposed to be pre-approved. The Mark Phillips that I work for now, he's bonded for twenty-six months, so anyhow he builds during this twenty-six months, he's allowed to get this warranty. So, I don't know which warranty companies or who you spoke of.
I'm happy to talk to you in greater detail afterward, but...
Yeah, and, and the other thing I wanted to say was, I know Scott's got this great class coming up on the thirtieth because our proposal's sixty pages long. I didn't thought it would be better if we had that nine thirty, nine o'clock morning to have down and sit with other people, I don't know if commissioners will be at this meeting, before you vote, so we get to get into the head degree of the sixty pages of what's on there with the professionals, F H A people, local builders, whoever, and have that class all together before you vote again, is what I'd like to see. And then, if it does pass tonight, it's August first, correct? Because when it goes into, or does it go?
Well, that, that's gonna be, I, I would suggest pushing it out, probably September first. It was originally prior to, but since tonight's, the later night, I, you know, would push that.
Okay, so if it passes tonight, it wouldn't be until then, but that, that class before you vote would be really nice. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure everybody in this room has gotten calls, phone calls, from warranty people wanting to sell you a warranty on your home. So, I don't see no reason to even have this thing when whoever building a house can get their own inspection. Franklin County's not ready for this, and our kids and our grandkids are sure not ready for it. And if a man or a woman wants to inspect, I don't have a problem with them getting their own inspectors. Them pay for it, don't tie this county up with this stuff. That's my personal opinion about it. I'm not for it, and I'll tell you now, I'm not for it.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, uh, we got hands going up. I believe you've outspoken, so we're gonna let this young lady come up and give her name?
Daily Porter, I live on eighty-seven...
I'm sorry?
Daily Porter.
How you doing, Mary Porter?
I live at eighty-seven fifty, Sandy Cross Road. Um, just my opinion, I think that if the buyers wanna get an inspection, great, they can do it themselves. If they wanna get three inspections to be on the safe side, great. The builder wants to have an inspection done so that they look like a better builder to their buyer, great. This is America, they can have their own options if they wanna do it. If someone doesn't feel the need to have an inspection, that they feel confident about the house themselves, and they shouldn't have to pay for any inspection, you know, that's my opinion. I think it's up to whoever wants it, you know, to pay for it themselves. And me, as a buyer, I wouldn't trust y'all's inspector, I would, so that's a waste of money. I'm gonna hire my own inspector.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Any other statements, question?
I mentioned this at the last meeting we had, uh, public hearing, and I mentioned what really weighs on my mind, and y'all brought out some real good points about why have it inspected, why not have it inspected and so forth. And then I get calls or emails from people that purchase a home that's already retired, and they pay cash for it because they want to come to Franklin County and retire. And they purchase a brand-new home that's been put up by a builder, and apparently the builder cut a lot of corners, and they didn't have no idea about that. So, they really had to bite the bullet, so to speak, in their retirement to live in a home that they had to constantly repair. And you look at it from both sides, I look at it from both sides. It's my building, it's my business if I want to build onto my house and do it myself, maybe miss the trusts or joys and don't have to inspect it. This inspected, inspection program that we've been working on for two or three years now, uh, as Scott explained, is a building program that actually is to build quality houses. And I'm predicting that we will start seeing explosion, I've already had some contractors mention to me about building homes in Franklin County and building subdivisions. And if we have a subdivision builder come in, and gets started and builds houses and so forth, we need to make sure that the people that's going to own those houses, coming to Franklin County to enjoy life, is not going to be purchasing something because they dazed, and they come to build houses in Franklin County because we don't have a building inspection. And a lot of them, a good builder will build it good no matter what, but you do have... But you do have people out there, and I see several good builders out here. And I would trust not even having an inspection with them people handling construction for me, but not anybody's like, like some of these sitting out here tonight. So you got two-edged swords here that we gotta deal with, and then we look at what it's gonna cost the county. I don't like the idea of bringing in a person right off the bat that's gonna cost the taxpayers somebody to keep up to do it. I look for a percentage that we're going to get through the inspection program on the people that's building your home, therefore, not punishing every taxpayer. That's just my comment. Any other commissioners want to come in before we adjourn here?
Could I make just one comment, please?
Uh, Mr. Porter, come on up. Which is one of the best, if you want some work done properly, right here it is. Go ahead.
Thank you for that, sir. My point that I would like to make is that your, the thing that you just laid out, wouldn't it have been better to just lay this out in the very beginning, saying, we expecting growth, we expecting subdivisions to be built, we need an inspection program, wouldn't it have been better to present it that way so that people understand what you're after?
I've made that speech several times, Porter. Thank you, that's a good statement. Okay, we run over about 25 minutes here. Let's take about a 10-minute break. And as you know, we do have a work session, commission work session. We will go in here at about, let's just say, 6:30. So we don't have to adjourn, just take a break. Thank you. You know, y'all are a lot easier. You responded a lot better than I recall when I was in the classroom teaching. Somebody trained y'all well. I'll settle down, quiet, but it's not quite like that if you're in a building with a bunch of students. But that's great. Okay, I think we had a good public hearing, and I think we had some good comments and so forth, and appreciate you being here tonight. And so I'm gonna call the work session in Franklin County, Board of Commissioners here in session, it's a work session. And I'm gonna call on one of the commissioners, like always, I have the implication of pleas and leagious, and tonight, Commissioner Swales, if you'll lead us, please, and those two.
Salmo, our heads. Lord, thank you for an opportunity to be here together, to share our feelings about something that's very important, to hopefully hear from everyone that had an opinion on this, and really dig deep, and be thoughtful about this going forward. Pray that you guide us, not just today, but throughout the future, as we make more decisions that affect our county and its citizens. Thank you for this day, and bless our time together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please, if you see. Like always, we opened it up for public comments. So at this time, on our agenda, hopefully you picked up one when you came in, we got public comments. Please come up if you want to make a public comment. Remember, this is comments. Give your name to the clerk and make your comment, please. Anybody want to make a public comment tonight? Here none. We'll move right into the item for discussion, building inspection program. As we said, we've been working on this two or three years to look at the inspection for the, and we have slammed this thing front, back, with up and down. We've got a lot of good comments, and I can see both sides of this. Any commissioners, now it's the commissioners' time to say something. Y'all got anything that you'd like to, on the building, any comments you'd like to make on the building inspection program?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The first one, I see the pros and the cons on this. Having been in the building industry previously and everything, I can't tell you how many times we went back into a home that was a little over a year old to fix things that were not done properly, that cost those homeowners more money on top of what they had already paid. I understand about feeling like it's infringing on people's rights and everything. I understand that and I get that. I also look at it as the whole reason that the state of Georgia, the DCA, comes up with the state building codes was, the main purpose was for the safety. As a volunteer firefighter, we got paged out to a fire that's been within a week, to an elderly lady's home who fortunately has some family there with her at the time. But what had happened was, she had a clog in her sink, they poured some stuff down the sink to get this unclogged. Low and behold, there's an outlet underneath the sink that they had the dishwasher plugged into. When that pipe started leaking, and that water hit that outlet, it caught on fire. And low and behold, the way it should have been done is the breaker should have kicked, but it didn't. So it sat there and caught on fire under her cabin. Luckily, a family member was there running, shut off the main breaker in the house, and got her out. There's a huge safety factor in this, in my side, in looking at this. Is it always easy to get along with a building inspector? No, not always. Is it for the better, knowing that house has been built right, it's been plumbed right, it's, the electrical's been done right, your heating and air's been done right? And that's what it comes down to for me, is knowing that it's been done correctly. And, you know, whether it's a licensed builder doing it, or it's an unlicensed builder doing it, at least it's been done correctly, because once that house is built, if it's ever sold, you can have a home inspector come in there, and they can inspect it all they want to. The problem is, they're not gonna see what's behind that sheet rock. They're not gonna see the main thing that needs to be inspected. They can't see how the framing was done, they can't see how the wiring was done, they can't see how the plumbing was done. And that's a huge issue when you bring up spending $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 on a home. I mean, you can get it inspected, but it's not truly inspected to the court, and that's what concerns me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other statements, commissioners? Yes, I was right.
Just to echo Commissioner Wester, he deals with construction and building. I see homes every day. I deal with Realtors, with lenders, with builders. I want to make a declarative statement that I do feel like so many builders in Franklin County do things the right way. I see great homes. Mr. Smith, I mean, I used him to remodel my building. So I'm firmly in favor of hiring local builders to build your homes. You know, we can deal in hope, but we can also deal in reality. And the reality that I've seen is that people don't always do things the right way. People, if they don't have ties to a community, you know, maybe they look the other way. Maybe they don't do things the right way, because they're not held to account. I can point out many, many homes in our county that were probably built poorly. And I would be willing to say that none of them were built by people in Franklin County. But I want to, I want our local builders to not have to compete against someone coming in, building a subpar product. I want the future residents of Franklin County who are buying a home that's already been built, for it to be a quality-built product. And with regards to safety, I've got kids. A lot of us have kids. I don't want my kids to ever be in that kind of situation, where the substandard product could potentially cause a house fire, or whatever else might happen. The work has been put in to look at other inspection programs, how they're done around different counties. I feel like we have put in the effort to determine a quality company that will do a good job for us, that makes it affordable for us as a county. I have all the confidence in the world in Scott to do his job and hold him accountable, and to help our builders, our craftsmen, our tradesmen, correct the job before we assess penalties and fines. Give them that opportunity, and I know that is your heart as well. You know, growth isn't easy, it's painful, but I feel like this is an opportunity for us to grow, and hopefully, in a good way, as a county.
Thank you.
I'll just say, right now, when we have inspections, to the extent that we have inspections, we're going out and checking setbacks before they actually build, and that's totally inadequate. So I feel like there's a real need for an inspections program. I am worried about the cost, and I'm worried about the potential for overreach, because anytime you have a program, it tends to grow, it tends to expand, and the end product may not be exactly what we had in mind. So I think if this passes, we have to be very careful that it stays within those guidelines. That's why I've asked that we, if we consider it, we consider approving at the same time the fee list and the list of required inspections. So if that ever changes, those kinds of changes have to come back to us as a board. Also, customer service is important, and that goes to your veritas. I do not want to get calls that inspectors are rude, or that they're unreasonable. Customer service is very important, so whoever we have assigned, I hope that one of their skill sets is dealing with people and with confrontation and handling that. The only other question I wanted to ask Mr. Lozier, how, I know that the fines are gonna come from us, if there are fines or any citations. How are, what are the, what are the levels of, how are fines gonna be handled?
So it would come, if it comes to me to assess a fine, then I would send that recommendation to the magistrate.
Okay, so it would go through magistrate court?
Through the magistrate court.
Okay.
The recommendation for a fine or for a penalty would come through myself.
Right.
But the magistrate judge is the one who actually sets the fines and sets the.
I feel like fines, you know, and we talked about this before, should be a last resort. This should be about compliance, ensuring that the finished product conforms to code, not, you know, inspectors should be out there threatening fines or citations. It ought to be about, if the work doesn't meet the code, here's what's wrong with it, and give them time to fix it and be done with it. So I just want to be sure it's more about compliance than trying to fine or penalize people. That's all I have.
Mr., I don't have it. Okay. Excuse me. I know last time, we talked in terms, when we got through with the public hearing, and we basically decided to have this public hearing tonight. My interpretation, and I believe my cohorts here was also interpreted that we would go ahead and move forward with this decision tonight, based on, we already got lined up, I believe, a program on the 30th to meet with all the people that's interested, as the lady mentioned too, everybody get together and go and so forth. And we'll also discuss possibility, if we move forward on this, making it active as of September 1st. So we have time to maybe do some adjustments and so forth if it's approved. Saying that, I'm gonna ask if we got any commissioners that would like to make a motion that would move forward with the building inspection program. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with the building inspection program. Under the agreement, as Dr. Mackinson presented it, that all fees, laws, and enforcement are current, and this is what we're agreeing on. Any changes going forward would be required to be brought before the board for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Swales makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester. So we got a motion and a second. End of discussion, gentlemen.
Just want to clarify now, we're saying that the fee schedule and the list of required inspections, and of course, the ordinance, that's what we're approving.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other statements, discussion? All in favor, signify by your right hand? We got four in favor, all opposed, we got one opposed. So it passes. Now we'll move to the next item, which is announcements. I'll start us off. As you know, we got the census taking place now, the 2020 census. Let me tell you, if you haven't turned in your census, it's very important. Every citizen in Franklin County fill out their census. Why? Because it means more funds comes to Franklin County according to the number of people in the census count. So if you've got yourself or a neighbor that hadn't filled out the census, 2020 census, that is very important for every citizen in this county. It hinges that incredible amount of funds, more funds we can get, the higher count our census is. So please remember that. Any other announcements, gentlemen?
Yes, I would like to just say a special thank you to our first responders, our EMS, our firefighters, the police, the sheriff's department, and also the other government workers that we're seeing arise in additional cases. And they understand the risk, but they're also showing up, and they're still doing what they need to, to protect our county and its citizens. And it just, it really means a lot to me.
Thank you. Any other announcements, gentlemen?
I would echo what Commissioner Swales said. The cases of COVID-19 are spiraling in Franklin County and the surrounding counties. And it's worse now than it ever was in April during the shutdowns. So I just encourage people, use caution in public, wear a mask where appropriate, and just take care, because this is not over. And all of us, many of us now probably can talk about people we know, or either first or second degree, who have been affected by this, whether they've been quarantined, or whether they have it. And I think our healthcare system is beginning to feel the strain from that. And that may not be obvious today, but that may be a different situation in one, two, three weeks from now. And so we need to be mindful of that.
I echo what's been said here tonight, and basically, on this pandemic, we understand together. Please be careful. If it crashes, it's gonna affect Franklin County pretty severely. And we want to do our part to set us up to make sure it doesn't crash. Let's try to keep the economy going, keep everybody well and this type thing. So keep that in mind. Any other announcements, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask for all of us to continue to remember to keep officers, owners, family in our prayers, and to remember our sheriff's department in our prayers. Unfortunately, he lost his life in the line of duty this past week. And we just need to remember them.
Thank you. Here are no other announcements. Do I have a motion? We adjourn.
Make motion and we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wester. Second?
I second that.
Thank you, Dr. Mackerson. All in favor? Five votes. We stand adjourned. Thanks again for being here.